Okay. This is the zoning hearing officer process for Wednesday, December sixth, the first call. First item on the call is twenty-three oh ninety-one, the Gaffney petition. This is a Naperville Township case and the petitioner has requested there the right to withdraw this petition and so we're granting the right to withdraw. And we'll close the case, take no further action. Off the record. Call in the zone. Coming hearing officer. And I will call twenty-three oh ninety-two, the Seolis petition. This is a request for conditional use to increase the total size of detached accessory buildings. From permitted six hundred and fifty square feet to approximately twelve hundred square feet. It's Wilmydale Township case. Lot that is about six tenths of an acre serviced by well and septic. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. And I have no comments or objections by the various authorities to whom we've circulated the petition. It appears that I have one exhibit. And I'm not sure what it, I suppose it purports to be the site plan. We'll talk about that further in a moment. I don't have a survey. I have only this site plan. Ms. Seolis. Would you rate again and be sworn in, please?
Yes. Do you need me on video for this?
No, not necessarily. But it's up to you.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence that you're about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes, I do.
Good, thank you. First, just identify yourself, spell your last name and give us your address.
Yes, Stacy Seolis, S like Sam, E O L E S like Sam. My home address is twenty-one W seven-one-five Maple Avenue in Medina.
Okay. And have you, do you live at the property?
I live next door to the property. My husband and I own both our, our primary residence and then the structure directly next door in which, excuse me, the home next door in which the proposed structure will be on.
Who lives at the property that is in question here?
It, it's currently vacant.
Okay, what are you doing? Do you rent it?
We have a lot of out of town family. My husband's entire family lives out of state and so they, they frequently visit.
When was the last time it was inhabited on a regular basis?
By the prior homeowner, Bruce Thompson.
How long have you owned the property?
Just a little bit over a year.
Okay, and what is it that you propose to do?
We would let, there's currently a detached garage in the back of the, of the parcel. And we would like to remove the current detached garage and rebuild a new one that's just larger.
Why?
Additional storage, mostly.
What do you do for a living?
We sell, we have a retail store in Hillside, Illinois, and we sell cabinetry and countertops. We own, it's a, a building. It's about eleven thousand square feet in which we do some light assembly, manufacturing, and then retail sales in the front.
What's the condition of the garage that you're removing?
It's, it's relatively old. The, if we were to repair the current garage, the, the roof is in, in some dire need of attention. It's, that's as best as I could describe it.
Okay, how will you access this new proposed garage?
Um, well, that was, that was something that Nick and I were, were debating back and forth. So either on, the, the current access is through, gosh, I have to think, it's currently through the east part of the property. So we were, we were debating whether or not to extend the driveway currently and just run the property straight back on the west side of the, of the home and the property line.
Do you have a corner lot here?
It's not a corner lot, no.
Well, how do you access the current rear garage from the east?
Really, it's just walking. We, we don't really drive back there. The prior owner used to store a, a classic car that he had in the back.
So you would just drive the property line? You have a, an attached garage on the residence here?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, what do you plan to use, what do you plan to store in the proposed new garage?
Potentially one, one or two cars and mostly just just our, just our stuff. We really, we don't ever have enough storage for the most part. We're, we're pretty much at capacity in our home and so since we, you know, conveniently own the property next door and the, the garage, the, the detached garage currently is, it, I don't know that it's fiscally responsible to try to repair it, you know, versus increasing our space and just constructing something, something new.
You propose to have utilities run to the new garage?
The current garage has electric and so we would, we would do the same, but beyond that, there would be no additional utility that would be needed.
Okay, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Why do you need such, I mean, you're asking for twice as much accessory building as you're permitted. Why do you need such a large? I mean, if, if you're repairing the old garage.
We're not, we weren't planning to. We would just remove it.
I, I understand that, but if, as an alternative to repairing your whole garage, you decided that it's more cost effective to build a new frame garage, why do you need such a large fifteen by forty foot garage?
To be truthful, the amount of toolboxes and, and tough that my husband has, it just, it would make more sense because the back of the lot is just completely empty. There's, there's nothing else there. We don't plan to make the home any bigger. So it, it's just to maximize our space.
Okay, well, I understand your request. So you understand this process?
Um, in terms of next steps or permits and such?
Right.
I, I don't fully, no. Jessica's been a wealth of knowledge and helpful.
I consider this record and I make a decision about your case. That, that constitutes a recommendation to the county development committee. Then they consider the matter at an open hearing at their next meeting, which is in January. And, and then they transmit the, their recommendation to the full county board so that the final decision would not be made on this case until the end of January.
Okay.
So that's pretty much all I have. I mean, I understand your request. So you have nothing further? I'll close the hearing.
Uh, no, unless you have any additional questions. That, that is all that I have.
No, I don't have any, I mean, you know, you answered my questions. You didn't, I mean, all you did is answer my questions. You didn't add any independent testimony, but you answered the questions that I had, so I'm fine. So we'll
Thank you.
Close the hearing.
Great. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll call. I'll call it Courtney petition, which is twenty-three oh ninety-three. This is a conditional use to allow the good side of the fence to face inward instead of outward to an adjacent property. It's a about a third of an acre lot in Downers Grove Township serviced by well and sewer. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. No objections or comments from any of the various departments or authorities whom we've circulated the petition. And I have one exhibit, which is a combined survey site plan. And I'll mark his petitioners exhibit one. On that site plan, which is dated twenty-seventeen. It indicates a fence damage due to something, sections replaced. I can't read this word. Sections replaced, repair, repairs done over time. And I'll note that this is a twenty-seventeen survey. Customarily, we require a survey that's less than a year old or less. However, I think with an affidavit in this case, we'll be able to resolve that problem and use this survey. I note that, who are you guys?
We are Anna and Jason.
Okay. Would you be sworn in, please?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, tell me, tell me your name for the record and your address.
Anna Courtney, four zero zero five North Glen Street, West Montana, six zero five five nine.
And you, sir, Jason Courtney, four zero zero five North Branch Street, Westmont, Illinois, six zero five five. You both live at the property?
Correct.
And how long, you owned it since twenty-seventeen, I guess? All right, tell me what's going on.
We bought the property in two thousand seventeen, hence the survey. That's the only one we had. The fence was already there and was facing the same direction and we never paid much attention until a section fell off, so we repaired it. And over the years, another section fell off. And then in twenty-twenty-two, there was like in the middle, there's a tree. And right around that tree, the neighbor next door, they have a very narrow driveway. And when they back into their driveway, they usually make a mistake. And that section fell off and ten screws later, we repaired it with new materials and stuff like that. I had a lot of pickups with this because a lot of sections were just damaged and rotten over the years. So as we went, we replaced. And then in the last year, we just decided to replace the damaged other sections. So therefore, there was a lot of material ordered and unfortunately, home people sent raw materials. So that actually extended the project and there was a material sitting for a very, very long time, but that's all. And
Just, just trying to, to try to make everything uniform at the end of the day.
We just did what was there. So we had no idea that this was supposed to be another way. It's just we bought the house this way.
Was the good side of the fence, the, the good side of the wood facing your house originally?
Since we bought it, the people are on it.
What do your neighbors have to say about this?
You know, I, I don't really know. I think this, this has only come up because of the neighbor that's on the other side of the property. We had a problem, brief problem. It wasn't really an issue. He, he was talking to the, you know, our friend, a relative that was doing it for us, helping us out with it. And he was trying to coerce them into, to getting it to face the other way. And I was really unsure why because it's always been that way. I actually used to, you know, rent the house before we bought it. We've been at this property for a very, very long time. So I'm not really sure why this guy was kind of disrupting things. And we don't really have a relationship with the guy next door. It just, just it kind of started to become a problem because of this fence and there was no financial participation whatsoever. It was a very expensive, you know, fence. It was not something that was just cheaply done. You know, and, and it's there.
It looks like the fence is totally on your lot line. It's all on your lot. There's no, it could be, yeah.
And that's like I said, that's the survey we got since we bought the house. We had to get that particular survey and that's from two thousand seventeen. Nothing changed ever since. Since then.
Do you have any pictures of both sides of the fence that you want to introduce as exhibits?
I think I have to blow it.
I can't, what you want to leave your phone forever?
Right. No, 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 no. It was just sections. I'm trying to think.
I got pictures from.
Well, you can't show me something on your phone because I need an exhibit for the hearing.
I can email it to you. That's fine.
So let's take, well, the county has photographs, so if you give us a minute, we'll pull up the county.
Right, yeah, it's fine.
I remember uploading pictures.
Okay, look at the screen up there. Does that appear to be your fence and your house?
That's correct.
And the finished side faces your driveway?
That's after the repair, yes.
Yeah, all right. Can we see the other side? So does that appear to be a correct depiction of the other side of the fence?
That's on the neighbor's side.
Yeah, and I just want to, I would just want to note for the record, if you notice how close the gentleman's red pickup truck is to the fence, this is why we're having problems. This, this gentleman has disregarded the, the fence like it's, it's not there and we're having kind of, you know, small scuffs with the neighbors because of it. So I'm, I'm not really sure that that's.
I have a two thousand eighteen photo. I could email to somebody. This is
It used to, it used to have, it used to have brown paint to match the house and power wash everything. You know, it, it nice new pieces that were replaced, you know, it's.
What's the condition of the fence now?
Well, the panels, it's a very good condition. It's not moving, not going anywhere.
How long do you think it will last?
Thirty years.
There's a reason to have the rules as they are so that that side should face your neighbor. The opposite side is not particularly attractive. But do you think you could put some finished wood on the opposite side? There's two choices here. I can either grant this for a short period of time, which is, you know, the most I ever do is ten years. But I could do this typically in a fence situation, I do five years if it's granted. Or you can finish the other side of the fence. So I think I know what my inclination is, but.
I unfortunately can't afford to finish the other side of the fence. That's.
That's why we did inspections.
Seven thousand dollars.
I thought we did it in parts. We couldn't just do.
I wish I, I wish I could.
We did a little bit this year, a little bit this year. This part fell out. Actually, the first section, this, this edge, this, this section was replaced twice. This is the second time we had to replace the post and the section because the first time, couple of years ago, we thought it was a wind, but there was no way of the wind.
Why do you need that fence?
Pardon?
Why do you have that fence? It's because it was there.
It's always been there. We bought it like that and it's always been there. So we just kept it there.
Okay, I think I know, I, I think I have an idea about the case. So I'll make a ruling that you'll receive in the next couple of weeks. But because of the next two steps of the process, which will occur not before me, but before the county board and its subcommittee, that, that taking place in January, you won't get a final determination about this until end of January. Okay?
I would appreciate if you all would know, say, because we had this the same way and there's been no.
Okay. Thank you. I'll close the hearing. All-in Automotive LLC base. This is a conditional use to allow auto sales in the B-one local business district. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. No comments received about the case from county or other authorities. And I've got, I don't know what I have. Do I have a survey? This is the survey?
Yes. One property, or sorry.
Well, I can't tell. I mean, it appears to be a portion of a story.
That's all one person?
Yeah. All right, so I have a twenty. Looking for a date for the survey. Looks like a twenty-fifteen survey. Which is not adequate for a business. Then I have maybe a parking. A exhibit two, which is an indication of parking dumpster and employee parking. Then I have exhibit three, which is some kind of an aerial. I don't know what this is. I don't know. Explain what this. Where'd you get this?
Parking?
Yeah. Who's car drivers?
The customers.
Customers for who?
Of all the shop.
Okay, so I'll take that as exhibit three, which is in the aerial. And then I have exhibit four, which is a lease. You raise your hand and be sworn in, sir?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? The testimony that you're going to give, is it going to be the truth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you raise your hand? You understand what you just said there?
Yeah.
You're taking an oath, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You know what I mean by an oath about your testimony?
Yeah.
All right, what's your name, sir?
Z H. U N D. A. L B E K.
Seth, your first name or your last?
First.
What's your last?
Z H U M. A B A E V.
And what's your address?
Ten South Six Forty-four. In Bay Highway.
Is that your home address or your business? What's your home address?
Sixty-seven. Cobblestone Court. Shambol. Depot, two zero one.
Who are you in relation to this case?
None.
Of what?
Oh. All in our, our, the repair shop.
Of what?
Our repair shop, our, our repair shop.
And where does the auto repair shop, where is the auto repair shop located at this site?
Yes, ten South Six Forty-four, in Bay Highway.
How long has it been there?
From May twenty twenty-three.
And how many people are employed at the auto repair shop?
Me.
Okay. What is it that you request?
We'd like to get a dealer license.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm, I'm talking about what do you request with respect to zoning?
Because our zoning is not allowed to get dealer license. We spend several hours in the secret of state.
Say that again?
We, we send all documents to secret state of state to frame through. And by the time.
Okay, so what is it that you want from zoning?
We need to change the zoning D. I guess.
But this is not a request for rezoning. This is a request to allow auto sales conditional use in B-one.
Mm-hmm.
Right? You gotta tell me about your case.
We would like to sell cars, like, we could buy about three, five cars in a month. We will buy cars and repair in our shop and sell to dealers.
You, you propose to buy cars that need repair? Three to five per month? Once you repair them, you will sell those cars to dealers?
After.
After, that's right, after repair?
Yeah.
You're going to sell those cars to automobile dealers?
Yeah.
And you need a car dealer's license for that?
Yes.
You're not selling to members of the public?
No.
And that, it doesn't seem to me that they would need anything. You think that.
Per the secretary's say, they require a proof of notice of proper zoning for us to sign on time. And oh, can't sign that unless they have the proper zoning to sell cars.
But they're not selling to the public?
It's going to be my license for this.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. What are your hours of operation?
Eight to six P M. Monday to Sunday.
And twelve months a year?
Yes.
Why do I have these exhibits about parking? Why did you give me these?
They're received mail. From the beach hall.
This says customer parking. If you don't sell to members of the public, why do you need customer parking?
We sell all of the customer parking.
You don't need.
There are a lot of parking. The parking is not fun.
How many spots are in this customer parking?
Twenty-six.
Why do you need twenty-six parking spots?
We don't need twenty-six parking. But when we waste this building, they go, this parking for us.
Okay.
We can move both.
I think you need to get some help with your case, sir. I, I'm, I can't make your case for you by asking all these questions. And I'm not sure if I ask a question that I'm getting an answer that, I, I'm, I'm not sure that we're communicating well. So given what you've told me, I'm inclined to be somewhat, first of all, I wasn't sympathetic to this. But if you make a better presentation, I may be able to grant this. So therefore, I think you need to find a zoning lawyer to help you with your case. All right? Oh, who is it?
I remember.
I see I have a member from the public?
Yeah. Hi, Alexis Zemitis. I was on last week for the Car Right One, which is the
Yeah, are you going to tell dealership right next door to them, right here?
Well, they will probably be selling to in my, my suspect.
Well, the dealership next door said they were doing luxury cars. So.
I think you should go online and see what they sell, so.
Okay, were you sworn in, sir?
Uh, no, I'll, if you can swear me in. I raised my hand before, so.
Okay, we'll be sworn in.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony and evidence you're about to give at this time shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes, I will.
What's your name and address?
Alexis Zemitis. Ten South seven-three-zero Jackson Street, Burridge, Illinois.
And what's, what do you want to say about this case?
Okay, ah, just, I'm repeating. Okay, ah, just, I'm repeating what I said last week. Uh, my concerns are. Light pollution. Uh, I'm going to read this little uh.
This is a business district and there's no indication on any of these uh, documents that we're gonna have. Pole lights or anything of that nature.
Okay.
You still have a concern about light pollution?
Yeah, because if they're gonna be storing cars, they're gonna be, you know, running lights there twenty-four hours a day. And this place is gonna be like a nighttime baseball park. And that's what we, we fear, because this is smack in the middle of a residential area on three sides.
Okay, what decides lights?
Uh, noise. What happens when car alarms go off with the thirty, forty, fifty cars that are parked out there? That no night watchman is taking care of? No?
Okay, thank you, sir. I do remember your information from the last hearing.
Yeah, I, you know, I just want to add that, you know, I sat in on the, the hearings for the truck stop a couple of months ago and everything like that. At least they had proposals, solid, serious proposals addressing these issues. Here I see nothing, no?
Understood. Okay, thank you. To you, sir, I, I don't, I cannot make a decision about your case based on what you've given me. If I was, attempt to resolve this right now, I will simply say deny because you haven't made your case. So um, if you have uh. I don't think that it's public information about the last case yet. We issued a ruling in the last case, but I wasn't sympathetic to that case. So I don't want you to waste your money. But in other words, I'm not sure that you have a, a, a very good uh, chance of approval here. But as it stands now, you have no chance of approval. So I'm gonna continue this case once our, once.
What we need to figure out for January?
Oh, all right.
Well, we don't need their small parking, that parking is enough for us. And we will not use small parking.
Okay, well, if you want to sell three or four cars to a dealership, you're gonna need to. Which I'm not saying that I'm gonna approve that, but I'm not gonna approve anything based on the testimony from today. This is a business. It's a very sloppy presentation. I cannot be sure that we're communicating, that I'm getting um, full and complete answers to all of the questions that I asked. And it's not my job to ask the questions. It's your job to make a presentation. So if you want, I'll either rule now and you can take your chances. That the county board will overturn my ruling and grant your request. Or I'll allow you an opportunity to uh, sharpen up your presentation with the assistance of a zoning attorney. That's gonna, you know, that's, you're gonna have to pay a fee for that. So uh, what do you have for? Okay, January ten. We'll take this case again at two thirty in the afternoon right here. And, you know, if you have an attorney, he'll probably appear. But um, and make sure it's a zoning lawyer, somebody that's familiar with the process, okay? Good, all right, thank you very much, uh. And we'll close the hearing for today.
Thank you.
Yep, thank.